You need tissue? You need tissue?
We're ready. Oh, I just put him in my mouth. All right, are we good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education. Had some technical difficulties, so we are back up live. So, in order to be fair to everyone, Dr. Walker, we're going to start back at the beginning of your presentation, if you don't mind, with the contract approval.
Not a problem, thank you, and now, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This presentation, I'll seek your approval of the negotiated agreements between the Education Association of St. Mary's County Certificated Group and the Education Support Professionals. Pleased to say, we've agreed to another four-year contract that provides stability for the system, the ability to plan ahead from a budgetary perspective, and meaningful benefits and enhancements for our employees. In terms of the timeline, we started, as per our negotiated agreement, back in November of 2019. We met about once a week through the winter break, and then, beginning in January, we started meeting twice a week, concluded on February 13th of 2020 with a tentative agreement on four-year contracts with both groups. On March 2nd, the ESMIC ratification began, and although they had to change their method of ratification through, during that timeline because of the situation in the community of the virus, the, they were able to complete ratification as of last night around 5:00, I think it was, but we received notification from Ms. Laskin that it was overwhelmingly ratified by their members, our employees. The ESMIC agreement for certificated employees had over 99% approval from members, and the ESMIC ESP agreement had over 98% approval from the agreement, based on the numbers that Ms. Laskin provided last night. So, with that, now that the organizations, now that the associations have approved the agreements, we come to you today seeking your approval of the agreements as well. So, just an update on the negotiations team. ESMIC changed their method again this year a little bit to have a different arrangement during their, during the setup, and their negotiations team consists of the members you see on the screen. In terms of the Board of Education, Dr. Farrell, Ms. McCourt, and I were at the table, Mr. Law and Dr. Montgomery were available for any kind of assistance we needed during negotiations, and I think both teams functioned very well. Each team was fair, open-minded, made excellent arguments on each side for proposals, and we feel very strongly that this group of individuals pursued and achieved an agreement that is in the best interest of our employees and the school system. We have plenty of debate, strong opinions. ESMIC's team represented their members, again, our employees, very well. We appreciate their collaboration with us on the agreements that you see before you today. So, it is a four-year agreement, we'll go through some highlights now. It is a four-year agreement, there's only one possible opener, and I'll read this because it's important. If during the term of this agreement, legislation is signed into law that requires compensation greater than that negotiated herein, then the parties will open negotiations for this specific and sole purpose of meeting that legislative requirement. There is, as everybody knows, some uncertainty, especially during the time we were negotiating, it's maybe a little more clear now, maybe not, that the current legislation might require some things or require us to adjust some things. So, in terms of salary, if there's any requirement to do more than we negotiated here, we've agreed to go back to the table and have that conversation. For salary, we've agreed that each year, employees would receive a step on the salary scale, and each year will also, employees will also receive a cost of living adjustment, we'll call it a salary scale adjustment here. In the first year, that's 1%, the second year is 1.75%, and in the third and fourth years, it's 2% each year. Other issues related to compensation, we've clarified in the agreement how employees are placed on each salary scale, generally just documenting our current practice, but we want to make sure it's clear so everyone understands how people are placed. We've added board-certified behavior analysts to the list of positions that qualify for a stipend. As I know many of us have heard, behavioral support in the schools is becoming critical, so having qualified employees that can assist classroom teachers and support staff is really important. So, board-certified behavior analysts will receive $1,000 a year in addition to their salary as an additional stipend. Pupil personnel workers, again, to provide support to schools and students and families. We've provided a maximum of two workdays in the summer at their regular pay rate. And finally, on this slide, we've improved compensation for extra pay for extra duty assignments. That's been needed for many years, and we feel good about the adjustments that we've negotiated in the agreement this year. In terms of insurance and leave, we did make a few adjustments here. We've added deductible plan options for retirees. Those have been available to active employees but not to retirees. We have many retirees requesting those plans, and now they're available in retirement. And we phased in adjustments to active and retiree employee contributions in year, beginning in years two, beginning in year two, continuing in year three, and then, once the year three number hits, it'll stay that way, ongoing, at least through this agreement, pending next negotiations. That is a little, an adjustment in the triple option employee contribution. We also increased the personal leave allocation for 11-month employees by one day, and we allow employees now to accumulate eight days, that's up from six in the previous agreement. And we provided the full FM, family and medical leave allowance to spouses who are both employees. Right now, are currently, employees share 12 weeks, but both employees will now have access to 12 weeks separately, as other employees do separately. Tuition and support, we've improved course tuition reimbursement, and we're highlighting and trying to improve support for current employees who are seeking teacher certification. So, we look at educational support personnel at any, at any, in any position that might want to become teachers, we've increased the allocation for that reimbursement, and we've modified sabbatical leave language to support their pursuit of that certification. And across the board, we did increase by a small amount the course tuition reimbursement annually for all employees. We increased stipends for degrees and credits, again, to emphasize and support employees who are seeking additional education, like master's degrees, master's degrees plus any credits, even bachelor's degrees as well, for our support employees. And we increased support for employees with infants who require time to nurse during the day. Those are the highlights. Our recommendation is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I have one, just for clarification, on the slide before this, the modified sabbatical leave language. I'm assuming that that is for any, like, if we have a para educator or substitute teacher that is employed that has to leave to go and complete their student teaching requirements? Is that, that's what that's referring to?
Right, yes, it is, but we've expanded the language from para, or from para educator to any employee. So, if we have even a food service person, or a building service, a food service worker, a building service worker that's pursuing their degree in education, any employee in that group has the ability to apply for and receive sabbatical leave for the period of time they be student teaching.
Okay. Okay. Jim, do you have any questions?
The only question I have is, increase stipends for degrees and credits for all employees. Are you, are any of the employees limited to the course that they have to take, and they have to be, does it have to be tailored towards, you know, their particular job and education, or could it be in any degree?
Dr. Farrell, can you help me with this one?
Sure, so, for those employees that are non-certificated, so, support staff, they can take any educational coursework that we deem appropriate. Usually, those are related to their position or enhancement into, like, a teaching position. Once you become a certificated teacher, there are stipulations around what courses you can take to maintain your teaching certification, and some of those are mandated by the state, such as, like, reading classes. But then, once they've got those basics down, usually, most folks go for a master's in their field of study, or in administration, or things like that.
The purpose of this language is, Mr. Davis, is to, the slide language emphasizes support personnel group. The salary adjustments for teachers and certificated employees who earn credits is, there are ranges on the salary scale that apply for them. These are additional stipends added to their salary for receipt of additional degrees, and then credits beyond those, primarily for professionals.
Yeah, I was thinking more like, in my case, I have to take courses to keep my license, engineering license, so if I was an employee, that would be covered, then I would assume. That request for that course would be covered.
Yeah, if you were, yeah, if you were employed as, like, an engineer, and we wanted you to maintain that license, yeah, definitely.
Right. That's all I have, thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
Oh, thank you. I want to first thank Dr. Walker, our chief negotiator, and Liz Purcell Laskin, for the wonderful job they did working together cooperatively to come up with a plan that will put us as close as possible to the tri-county area, the southern Maryland region. You have some good things in here, the salary, of course, is great. I also like the things you have in here for families, to provide full FMLA allowance to spouses who are both employees, that's a good one, and also, what, how we grow our own, and that's good. So, if there's someone, it doesn't have to be a para educator, it can be anyone who is interested in getting their certification. We have language in there for improved course tuition, so we're doing everything to recruit our own. So, I want to thank you again for the wonderful work that you've done, and then the whole negotiating team on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. We did, we have three teams, that's true. Thank you.
I don't, excuse me, I don't have any questions. I just want to comment about the fact that this is the second time in, in all the time I've been on the school board, that we have been able to negotiate a contract for four year, a four-year period. The amount of time it takes on both sides to come to agreement, to have the discussions about what's in the contract and what changes can or should be made, is, is an incredible amount of time and work on the part of everyone, and, and so, it is really a hallmark of the trust that you have been able to garner within the work that you've done with the association to be able to provide this. It does not help us when we have to break something and wind up only able to have a year or two years of a contract at a time, and I cannot stress the importance and the significance of this enough. So, thank you for all that were willing to work in this direction and for making this possible, and we will do what we can to make sure that we are able to take this forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, then, may I have a motion on this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
Actually, no, it's on the, on the.
To the front page?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I got you. Thank you. All right. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the fiscal year 2021 through 2024 negotiated agreements between the Education Association of St. Mary's County for Certificated Professionals, ESMIC Certificated, and the Board of Education of St. Mary's County, and the Education Association of St. Mary's County for Education Support Personnel, ESMIC ESP, and the Board of Education of St. Mary's County.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion is carried. Once again, thank you, Dr. Walker and your team, and Tammy, I know you were running numbers, probably as they were talking during the negotiations, so, as Mrs. Allen indicated, this is it, this is, this is the negotiated agreement we have for the next four years, so this is what we will be held to and, and fund, so, just so everyone's clear on that.
And I would like to just add, and I'm just, I'm very grateful to work for the Board of Education. I'm very grateful to work for all of you and for Mrs. Weaver who had to depart. You remain steadfast in your commitment to our people and our people's commitment to our kids. We had a four-year agreement, we were able to find each year the way to fund that four-year agreement, and we have now put ourselves into another four-year agreement, and we will find a way each year to meet the negotiated agreement salary requirements. Although we got abbreviated in the morning, we went before the county commissioners yesterday, we were going through the budget process, we are about $1.3 million shy of the money that we would really need to do the fully funding of the negotiated agreement, and also look at the compensation that we're, that we're considering and putting forward for our bus drivers. But I am confident that we will find a way, working with our funding agents, to see just how important it is to pay people what they deserve, and our people absolutely deserve this. So, just thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. And now, next on our item are, we have a whole group of people for the Power School enhancements.
All right.
It's incredibly appropriate.
All right, so, let me exit the full screen, let me go over here and get here, and it is Power School. I'm, and look at, I'm learning technology.
Who's our lead?
So, we have Tammy McCourt, Dale Farrell, Dr. Maher, Dr. Jaffers, and I believe that Tammy McCourt is going to start us off, correct, Ms. McCourt?
That's correct. So, good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, we want to start by providing you some background on our current usage of Power School. We currently use a variety of modules. E-School Plus, which includes HAC and TAC, E-Finance, which includes HR, accounting, budgeting, accounts payable, payroll, and purchasing, Performance Matters, for the assessment and analytics, Unified Talent, applicant tracking, Unified Talent Professional Learning, and special programs. Of these current modules, the request before you includes an upgrade of the existing platforms of E-Finance and Cognos. And Cognos is a data access and report writing tool that's currently being used to support both E-Finance and E-School. And the upgrade cost for those two components is $54,806, and a Cognos Business Process Review is also incorporated in this proposal, costing $10,080. So, the Power School suite is a, it's a fully integrated system that allows for the engagement of all users and decision-makers in K through 12, both starting and ending in the top left of the graphic with the superintendent, followed by an integrated finance and HR system, professional learning for staff, access to both parent and student portal, use of assessment and analyticals tools, and gradebook for instructional leaders, teachers, and principals, and all systems flowing together to be supported by our IT folks. Next slide, please. We're recommending the purchase of these new enhancements of United Talent to include job board, candidate assessment records, and perform, as well as Schoology and enrollment. Purchasing these modules as a bundle will result in a discounted pricing for the school district, and the total cost for the professional services, the setup fees, and the training costs associated with all of these enhancements comes to $106,000, which would be recognized in the current fiscal year. Power School also has an absence management solution called Smart Find, and the cost to implement that software would be $5,800. We're considering that option, it's not before you today for consideration, but we have a meeting planned next Monday with ESMIC to see their, before making a final decision on that particular module. Dr. Farrell?
So, we've been using Talented for, for many years, they've called it a couple of different things, now they're calling it Recruit and Hire. Some of the upgrades for Recruit and Hire, they will automatically post our jobs on a national board called SchoolSpring. A half a million visitors visit that job board, so it will expand our opportunities to reach out to candidates far and wide. It automatically posts our jobs, once we post them online, it will automatically grab those jobs and put them out on SchoolSpring for us, we don't have to do that for them. It also provides us with candidate assessment tools that will help us to predict what candidates will bring to our school system, if they'll be successful in our positions, and the applicant tracking module helps to integrate our requisitions for new and vacant positions. The onboarding will help to embrace the digital platforms that we've all been using much more robustly in the last two weeks, but it'll allow for people to complete forms and new hire documents all online, so they can do it whatever time of day they want, they can sit with their families and get input from their families as they're filling out tax forms or retirement forms and things like that. Once the forms are completed, they're submitted, they're expedited for completion, they're routed to whomever needs the form, so if it's a payroll form, it'll go right to payroll, it doesn't have to come through HR first, we don't have to collect the forms and then copy them and send them out. It also allows us to send out forms to all of our current staff, so the annual assignment letters, we can do those through the Contracts and Forms Management, so we don't have to print letters of assignment and send those out to each individual employee. Employees can go online and do updates to their tax forms, they can fill out secretly bank forms, FMLA forms, workers' count forms, it'll send out reminders if there's forms that haven't been completed, and it allows us all to capture those forms in one place online. The workflows, we can set up workflows so that forms route through payroll to purchasing or finance, we can do it through curriculum and instruction or professional development, and we can collect electronic signatures or approvals using the HR workflows.
Uh-oh. We lost.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the Perform Module. We currently have a very robust system for completing teacher and staff evaluation processes online. That system, we've had in place for, for about 10 years now, it was developed in-house. This module that's in Power School has very similar capabilities, but also adds some additional elements for both efficiency and ongoing work with employees. It does allow for customizable employee groups, so, for example, we have a teacher performance assessment system, a leadership performance assessment, a media specialist performance assessment, and about six others. This will allow us to build those same type of evaluation systems in this system online. It also allows for continual processes that are very similar to our online observation and evaluation, evaluation tools, as well as some additional capabilities for staff interaction with those. So, for example, a teacher could post their reflective comments or their, their SLOs through this platform as well. The Perform Module also allows for more interactive data analysis and reporting, so that a principal can run reports at their school level about performance trends across their staff, and it can be done at the system level as well. And then, the additional element to this module allows for linking to the professional development piece of Power School, the PMPD that we currently have in place, that if the valuation data or observation data shows areas where improvement is needed, it can immediately link those employees to the online professional development modules through
This was to be the part that Dr. Jaffers, is Dr. Jaffers on? There's Dr. Jaffers. Dr. Jaffers, talk to us about UT and Schoology.
Okay, Schoology, let's talk about Schoology. We are, we're excited about Schoology as a platform to integrate a lot of our different platforms. We presently have TAC and HAC that don't necessarily communicate with our Performance Matters Assessment Platform. Schoology actually integrates all these components together so that teachers, students, administrators can all sort of be integrated together, in addition to the component of interfacing with our community at home. So, the whole idea here is that everything is integrated, including the idea of gradebook synced up with our Schoology platform, so that teachers can assign within this platform called Schoology, bring in outside ed tech, like what we're going to use as Edgenuity, and other sort of technology platforms, and it's all in one-stop shopping, so we don't have to go to outside vendors or outside web browsers to be able to, it's, it's really a continuity of learning within one particular platform.
Fantastic.
The next piece is the enrollment, and this is the other, I guess it's the last piece in this wheel that, that Ms. McCourt talked about. This idea of enrollment would be, our families would be able to register their student online, and we would be able to sort of mitigate some of the problems with information that we've, that's plagued us a little bit in our student information side, when the information that's, you know, it's sort of given to, to individuals, and sometimes, the writing is illegible, I can say that, and we have a hard time transferring that information into our student information system. What this enrollment does is it, it gives the power to each family to register their student online and, and sort of mitigates this problem with information. We've had a limited pilot to this in sort of the Esperanza region with some of their feeder schools, and we've had a lot of success, our secretary of staff seems to really like the idea of, of who saves the time and energy of registering students, because everything's done in real time, and we have information that's much more accurate, if you will.
The ongoing annual cost of the current Power School licenses total $335,000, and the enhanced program's annual cost will be $217,000 for a total cost of the entire suite of $553,000. So, at this time, we ask the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and we're certainly open to any questions you may have.
I have a question. With these, this new software, are you seeing any cost savings as opposed to how you are now doing the work?
We'll be recognizing a little cost savings within our Cognos and transitioning that over to the upgraded version, there's a little bit of cost savings there. There's also, should we make the transition on the absence management, there would be a cost savings there. We also currently have a DocuSign process that's being utilized with HR, and going forward with this process will allow for more efficiencies in our operations, as well as doing away with our reliance on that DocuSign software.
Thank you.
And I brought the group back to that large wheel. We're already using multiple elements under this, under the Power School umbrella, because Power School has gone out and found the best programs that are working most effectively in school systems and purchased them. So, the E-Finance program and, and things such as that are already in there. This is an evolution of service to St. Mary's County public schools, and the biggest thing is that all, once this, once we purchase this at this level, all the platforms communicate with one another with single sign-on, so you're not moving from this program to this program to this program. So, when we're looking for a larger efficiency, it's certainly going to be much more efficient for our employees, and ultimately, for our teachers and students and parents, they're going to see an integration of all of the. they're going to see an integration of all of the online platform to one single place. They'll just go to Schoology and all of the data and information would be there. That is the platform that Frederick County moved to two years ago. And that's why they'll probably be one of the forefront school systems as we make this transition for the next four weeks while we're closed to do continuity of learning from home. They're going to be very well positioned because their teachers have been instructing using the Schoology framework for all of their in-class and extended learning. So they're blended learning opportunities. So the kids are already going to be familiar with the platform. They'll just roll right into it and continue learning at home online.
Is there any way you can piggyback on other contracts, like a Frederick School System contract?
Well, we've been negotiating this price for the last two and a half months.
About three months now.
Three months, yeah. And when you look at the sheets, I mean, they're giving us a deeply, 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 deeply discounted rate. And the one thing that they're really, that they, and one of the reasons why they're doing that is because they want to have systems that buy everything in the wheel so they can ultimately be the sole provider. And then that's the way they want to present that to school systems as a one-stop shop for everything that they might need, from the superintendent all the way down to the individual parent.
Hey, that sounds great.
So on this wheel that we have here, does attendance come into play here?
Yes, yeah.
So remember when we had the presentation on the Raptor system? If you check in or out, right, a student, it's all electronic now. I don't have to sign a sheet and sign them in or out in the office. So how does this interact with that system? Or is this going to supersede that and that's just going to solely be used for checking IDs? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't know to what extent Raptor is going to be, will be part of that. But our current Home Access Center and Teacher Access Center is where we record student attendance.
Right, but during the presentation, remember we said, oh, look, if we have a fire drill and we have Raptor, here's the list of students that we know have been checked out.
Yes, that's, no matter what.
Completely separate from here.
Raptor pulls all the data from here to Raptor. So that when you have an event like that where you're removed from your classroom or we have to do parent, student reconciliation, Raptor extracts all of the information from there, puts it in their simple platform. You then do the, you picked up your two children, check, check. And when that's done, that goes then back to the school system's general depository for all of the student data information.
So this is going to be like historical daily attendance? That is going to be, the Raptor will be used if we have something that we need to check off, kids for a fire drill or everyone scattered for one lunch in a high school situation or whatever?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then I'm assuming then too with the, with the School Spring or whatever that Mr. Farrell was talking about, that we won't necessarily have as many personnel going out to job fairs to search for teachers because now we're going to be able to hit everyone?
This is going to dramatically alter the way in which we recruit. And so the only time that we would go out and do a recruitment, it would be for a very targeted need or to a very targeted school. We wouldn't necessarily need to go just on a recruiting trip up through the East. Every time we have a position open, we'd be exposed to 500,000 individuals across the United States.
Okay, all right.
I'll also add to that, Scott, that recruitment has changed drastically in the last two weeks. So almost every single job fair that we were planning to go to has canceled. Those that did cancel, I guess about half of them are looking to do online virtual job fairs. And we're signing up for those left and right. And so recruitment, I think, is going to be drastically different just based on this experience that we're going through now. School systems are going to see, hey, wait, we can save lots of money by not having to send folks out buying plane tickets and hotels and travel arrangements when we can do these things online and still get some bang for our buck.
Right, well, that, yeah, that was going to be my next point too. I'm sure with everything in the last two weeks that any type of recruitment we have seen before and as people get more comfortable with this and plus with everyone coming out of colleges being so adaptive to technology anyhow, you know, going out and walking through a bunch of tables is very old, old school, so.
Well, on top of that, so ease of application as well. So once a teacher builds a profile in Unified Talent, a teacher applicant builds a profile in Unified Talent and they want to apply to a different school system, all they have to do is click, it transfers all. So it makes it much more attractive to somebody who's seeking employment. They don't have to go and recreate themselves each time that they put through an application.
So maybe then our selling point is, once we approve this and we get it online, then we have the interaction with the career centers of our top colleges that say, hey,
Right, build a profile.
Look at this, build a profile, this is how you do it. And then that way we capture them because if not everyone is using this, then we are on the front line of getting the candidates that we have first choice at.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, and then I have one more question. I know it's not on the agenda, but on the school enrollment, if, so if I'm new to the system and I'm enrolling someone in kindergarten or whatever, if it's all going to be computerized on paper, does that program, does it allow me to set my boundaries for my school, run the address that I'm entering to make sure that the child is at the right school?
Yes, that's accurate. It does have boundaries that are built in by zip code and by street. So yes, that's all embedded in the platform.
Okay, so I would still need to provide verification that I live at that address, but at least I don't have, I don't have, I'm not the secretary who is going to have to go through and verify that the child is actually in the correct school?
No.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
I think this is wonderful because with the situation that we are in now with the coronavirus, I want to thank you, Superintendent, and your executive team for having the foresight to start exploring this months ago, probably years. And now you were at the negotiation phases, you say, about two and a half, three months ago.
Last three months, we've been negotiating the price.
So see, thank you for that vision to know that we needed something like this to unify all our systems. Also, our job openings will have a wider sweep. The old traditional way of going to colleges and universities to recruit teachers is sort of old school because we had a presentation at the board meeting several years ago about how that was changing, that it would be virtual tours. And it wouldn't be buying an airline ticket, hotel, meals, and having employees go away to find qualified teachers. And we want teachers who are highly qualified in using the technology. If they don't know how to access the technology to look for a job, then you might wonder, hmm, I mean, do we want someone who really doesn't even know how to apply for the job and use the various platforms out there? The onboarding is great because employees or students can complete any form anytime and send it to anyone in the system. You don't have to go to HR. So it's one place, you just go to that one place online. And it's all electronic and they can even sign electronically. We see the world is evolving just like the banks now. They want you to use the drive-through window. You have to make an appointment if you want to come in the bank. I got an email from my bank that's saying that. So because of this, what we're going through, the world is going to change even more. I like the evaluation tools, that they are customizable based on the position. The staff can interact and write in comments. So I think it's good, the online registration and enrollment. That saves time and money and it's convenient. And it takes us to a new level. So we have to always continue to explore new avenues to stay ahead of the technology because we have, education is even being delivered differently because it's this coronavirus. So it's a bad thing, this virus, but a lot of good things are going to come out of what we learn from this situation. So thank you for your leadership, your vision to look at things like this. So it's sort of perfect timing.
Yeah, that's very, yeah, very, the timing couldn't be, I wish the timing was six months ago.
Yeah.
But the timing is as good as we can, as good as we can get. So thank you very much, yep.
When will this be available?
So that's also some of the things we've been negotiating now. Of course, with the world is the way it is. With your approval today, we can execute that contract quite soon, which means then we're scheduling professional development for teachers. Because the very next thing to do is get everybody up and running. Our goal would be that when we start the 2021 school year, this would be, this backend would be, would be running. The Home Access Center and all the administrative suite of tools would be up and running. The observation and evaluation tools would be up and running. The Schoology would probably be a year-long professional development for all of our staff. So we would turn the platform on and then we would spend the entire year working with them, moving content, understanding how it's being used, choosing some of those digital pioneers who are going to leap right in and start using it, training for everybody, and then developing in-house trainer of trainers. So we would turn on the whole platform within this year, have the backend running all of next year. And then probably 2023, 2022, we would see everything being delivered on this, the entire instructional program run through Schoology. And that would be, that would align really well with whatever the state's assessment plan and program looks like. All that would be integrated across the entire platform.
In the event that this hiatus takes any longer than we already know that it will, are there online tutorials that teachers and other staff members could begin to review and just sort of, you know, check into it themselves?
This is the, all of the professional development that we'll be purchasing with that, it can all be delivered remotely. So, and that's the way, so we've had a couple of face-to-face meetings with all the representatives from Power School. But then from that point on, all of it has been done through Zoom meetings and interactive elements and going through the product. And that would be probably the way we deliver all of the, all of the professional development. So we're going to be closed for the next four weeks. We're going to be working with staff. We're going to clarify later today exactly through the Maryland State Department of Education what we can require of our 10 and 11-month staff as far as telework and availability. But with your approval today for this platform, that would certainly give us something that they would be able to explore in that time. It would be a great opportunity to deliver a lot of professional development on it.
And if I understood this correctly, parents will be able, excuse me, parents will be able to register their children through this platform when it's up and running?
Yes.
Is there an availability of more than just the English language? So for Spanish-speaking population, will they be able to go in and fill the form out in Spanish and have it translated back for staff?
That?
Yes, there's about 33 different languages that are built into the platform, yes.
Excellent, thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Okay, anyone else? All right, may I have a motion?
That the Board of Education approve the purchase of enhancements to Power School programs.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, motion is carried.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Walker, we're circling back to you with Drive Up Lunches.
Thank you, back again. So I'm pretty proud to share what we're doing in this area, in the area of food service while schools are closed. And I'm presenting from Ms. Megan Doran, Director of Food Service. The logistical challenges and the day-to-day effort that's required to do this from her office are significant. So I've asked her to continue on and I will present her information today. So we are offering meals to students, started on the 17th of March. It had been scheduled to go through Friday, March 27. We'll discuss continuation of that. It's offered from 11:30 to 12:30. And this, I want to emphasize this because I think this information has been communicated outside the school system and it's not accurate. This is not a grant-funded program. It's a program that complies with the regulations of the National School Lunch Program. There have been some waivers to some of the rules in the lunch program that allow us to offer meals at locations that might not typically be approved. One example is that the Margaret Brent Middle School site is not a location that would normally be approved because of the income levels surrounding areas. It's not what's called an area-eligible school based on free and reduced meals percentages. But one example of the waiver that has been allowed is that we're allowed to go beyond the traditional area-eligible sites for these types of programs. It is a logistically challenging program that relies on our seven employees in the food service office plan, order, deliver, coordinate, and manage the program. We have a ton of wonderful 12-month employees who've taken time to pack lunch bags, interact with families, provide meals, and solve problems at each site. And I'll note that Jill Morris, the Easemac president, has assisted every day at Greenview Hills Elementary School. So we're getting a lot of support from our 12-month employees and some volunteers even beyond that group. We offer meals to all children aged 18 years of age and under, free of charge. Parents can drive up to locations, receive meals that they can take home during the closures. Each package that they take includes breakfast, lunch, what's called supper on the National School Lunch Program. It's like a dinner, a snack, and four cartons of milk. So they pick up a plastic grocery bag full of all that food. And again, we've had a number of employees that have helped in this area and a lot of appreciation from families when we come and get their meals. Locations, Leonardtown Elementary School, Greenview Hills Elementary, Lexington Park Elementary, and Margaret Brent Middle School. And all have been very well, there's been great participation at each site. I'll show you numbers in a few minutes. Just want to show you some slides so you can get a sense of how things look at the sites, who's involved, what's going on. This is, we offer breakfast, lunch, snack, and supper, like I said. Next slide, it's a grab-and-go meal distribution. You can see the different stops here, the different people that are working, how we stage some of the material. Next slide is Lexington Park Elementary, the message to their students. They've had a big program at Lexington Park, Greenview Hills, great participation there and a lot of enthusiastic people assisting. Next slide is Greenview Hills also. A lot of good work going on in the community at these sites. Margaret Brent Middle School, again, great participation there. Leonardtown Elementary School, go back one slide if you could. Yeah, so just a comment here. On March 19th, prior to March 19th, we had sent a survey out to families asking about their internet and device access at home. On Thursday, March 19th, we spoke to each individual who drove up to pick up as best we could. Now, when things got busy, we might have slacked off a little bit. But we've checked with each individual to see if they had completed the survey. If they had not completed the survey, we asked them the survey questions in the line to get their lunches, to get their meals. And that just gave us an opportunity to survey people who might not have internet access or who might not have heard about the survey. But another way to reach out and get some information from families about their ability to use technology if we go that way in the long term, and it looks like we might. The next slide shows meal service total. So we start on the 17th. This goes all the way through yesterday's meal. So keep in mind that these numbers, every, every one here on this slide counts as, includes breakfast, lunch, supper, a snack, and four milks. So you essentially have to multiply this by three or four if you count snacks to understand the total number of meals that have been distributed through this program. We've had pretty consistent participation the last three or four days, around 1,500, up or down. It's been very well received by parents in the community. We've gotten excellent feedback. People are very appreciative. And we'll update the information for the rest of this week and have a plan going forward after this week is over. But it's been a very successful program. I can't emphasize enough the level of work that it's taken in the Department of Food Nutrition Services and across the system. But it's been very successful and I know a lot of people are very appreciative of it. So we are grateful. So we are grateful for the participation of our families. It's good to see the numbers increasing and getting to, getting to a good number. We're pleased and I'll take questions.
I just have, go ahead, Jim.
You had mentioned it's for children 18 and under, and I was curious, is the lunches and dinners, are they limited just to school students or does anybody under the age of 18 participate?
No. Well, I think most students under the, most people under the age of 18 are going to be students, but we're not checking IDs or verifying student status. If there are three students, we give three, three children, we give three. If a parent says, I need four for four children, we're providing four for four children.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My only comment is, thank you very much. As, I'm not sure everyone knows, or maybe you do by now, but clearly the school, the local school systems are not alerted prior to the school closings. We were not on March 12th and we certainly were not prior to today. So for your group, Dr. Walker, and actually this whole system, to do what I'm sure is an incredibly heavy lift and have everything up and running by, you know, the Tuesday after that announcement, I think is phenomenal. I think during everything that we are seeing during, during the shutdown, I think hopefully people are going to start to realize how much the school does provide to the community and to the students that we do every single day, that clearly is unrecognized because I know there was the concern about not having food service and lunches in the northern end of the county. I know some people were concerned about it, but it was, at that point, we were, we were, you know, bound by the constraints that were set up by the National School Lunch Program. It was not our choice, you know, we could only open at two schools. We had to receive permission to open at more. So in the interim, I know that they did set up food service up at one of the local stores up there with some coordination from some White Marsh parents in order to at least get something up there for those children up north. But, you know, once again, I think, as I said, everyone is going to see how much we truly provide to the community because, you know, the county government isn't providing meals to our kids, we are. So thank you very much and, you know, hopefully the, you know, the money and the funding will allow it to continue through the rest of this, of this school closure, so.
Is this a federal government program?
Yeah, the National School Lunch Program, yes, the National School Lunch Program is a federal program that's run through the State Department of Education.
Okay, so we get the money from the federal government to run this program?
Well, not directly. It all goes through MSDE, through their food service department. Megan Doran works with her contacts at MSDE. They communicate directly with the federal government to grant the waivers and make the rules.
Okay. The question that I was asked is how are the sites selected? Could you go over that and so everybody will know how the sites were selected for the food distribution?
So initially, we were required to hold any site at an area-eligible school. Like I said before, that's schools that have a certain level of free and reduced meal percentages, generally speaking, in the Lexington Park areas where those schools are. So then we looked at previous year's participation data in our summer meals program. And Greenview Knolls and Lexington Park have pretty significant participation. We decided to go to Greenview Knolls, Greenview Knolls and, what was the other first site?
Leonardtown.
Leonardtown Elementary.
Leonardtown Elementary.
Thank you. Greenview Knolls and Leonardtown Elementary were the first sites so we could spread the sites out a little bit. Then once we got the waiver, we knew we could go north and we felt like for that second day, we could go to Margaret Brent, that's an accessible location. And then we thought about another location, Lexington Park. There was a group providing lunches out of the Lexington Park library. And so I went down and talked with them about our, I didn't want to kind of step on their toes in terms of the service they were providing. So we discussed different options for both of our groups. In the end, we agreed that we would go to Lexington Park Elementary and they would move their food program a little further south. I don't know where they ended up in the end, but that was the, that was how we got to those four sites. And Ms. Washington, four sites, I don't know that we could go much further beyond that with the resources we have in food service. It's been a, been a challenge to accommodate all four of those. But we do feel like we've got a good range across the county and we're getting great participation at sites, at all sites, so.
And just to, just to clarify, the food service that's provided during the regular school day is provided by 10 and 11-month staff. We are providing 1,500 three-meal packs per day at four different sites using 12-month staff. Dr. Walker, who are your 12-month staff?
Well, in the food service office, I've got the director, two coordinators, a nutritionist, and a fiscal person, plus a warehouse person that we help, that helps transport and move. And we do have a couple of drivers that are helping as well. That's, that's the staff.
Right. Six or seven, six or seven people are at the core of this work. Then we have volunteers from all of the other branches that have 12-month staff. So that's where you get your principals, your office workers, your maintenance, your operations, your, all the other people. So like, all the people providing this service are, this is not, this is not their job in any way, shape, or form, and they're still supposed to be doing their other job while they're doing this. That's why we can only do four sites. So if the, if the state provides different guidance as next week, so we can bring back 10 and 11-month staff, we'll be in a different, we'll be in a different place. But we've been able to do this for two weeks with basically the, the office staff for food service.
I want to thank you for clarifying that because there was misconception in the community about how you're doing it and why you're doing it. And you cleared it up. That it's the Skeletons Crew that's doing this, it's our employees that have another job to do, who are leaving their job to go down to make sandwiches and everything. It's a big job, it's a big undertaking, I'd say.
It absolutely would not work without all of those individuals who are, who are at work, you know, these are 12-month employees, but taking an hour and a half out of the day to go to a site and provide support to the lunch program. There's no way it would work.
So would you be interested in volunteers from the community? Or you have restrictions of who can touch and serve food?
Yes, so we, I'll let Dr. Walker answer that.
Okay.
I was going to respond that we really need to see, we really need to kind of think beyond this week and how we go forward. There may be a need for volunteers, but we act, like Dr. Smith said, I think it's important to look at how we might use our existing staff starting next week if that's possible.
Yes. Then I guess you can look at it again and see what you have.
Right.
So how many people does it take to run a site?
We like to have, well, that's a good question. To be outside, visible to everybody, we typically have four, maybe five people outside. But we also have individuals inside packing more lunches, using existing food from the kitchen, freezers, refrigerators, to create more bags so that we're ready for the next day. So generally, we have about five people outside and another five inside.
I want to thank the SMCPS employees, you have principals, administrators, supervisors, secretaries, building service workers, everybody out there making sure that students are fed in the county. Now, if a family does not have a car, in which a lot of people in low income do not have a car, how can they get a meal? Can they, can the family just walk up if they live near the school?
Absolutely. That was part of the strategy behind both using Lexington Park and using Greenview Knolls to start and adding Lexington Park. They add some walkable access. And at Leonardtown Elementary, we've had quite a few people walk up and get food there. So absolutely you can walk up and get food.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think you cleared up a lot of questions that the citizens have about how the program runs, that any person 18 and under can get a meal and you're not checking ID, you just want stomachs to be filling and people to get a nutritious meal. So Dr. Walker, I can't thank you and the SMCPS employees who are taking their time and energy to do this, and they feel really good about it because I've seen a lot of smiles on their faces. This is something they want to do and it's a way that they can give back to help. So thank you and Ms. Doran and the Food and Nutrition Services Department and all the volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, I understand that it was, it's, that it's a federal program and that's the rules and regulations. Does the federal government also pay for all of these, the food and the materials?
So we are using the food service budget to purchase and yes, the meals are reimbursable to the government. So we do get reimbursements for each meal that we provide to students, yes. It in no way covers the cost of the food service program, but we do get reimbursed for the food that we provide, yes.
Right. I understand that and a food service program is a revolving fund, so the money that students and faculty pay for their lunches on a normal school day is what covers the cost of providing the service. So they're not in school, they're not providing, they're not buying lunches. So we're having to cobble this together through the resources that we are able to manage. So thank you very much.
Right. That's a great point, Mrs. Allen. Thank you. The food service program is run as a separate business, has its own account, has to make its budget work each year. We discussed this in previous meetings from the past, I know, but that's a, that's a good point and one that is going to be a struggle here coming up on the end of the year.
Absolutely. But thank you for doing it. I know this is a difficult time for everyone, our staff, but also the community, and this provides a truly needed service.
Thank you.
You need to only go to the grocery store to see how it's wiped out, to know that it's not necessarily drive up to a grocery store and pick up what you need. I've never seen, not even in hurricane season, have I seen the empty shelves like I've seen in the, in the few times I've gone to the grocery store. It is incredible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Dr. Mar. Online support.
Yes, so during this time of school closure, it's especially important that we maintain constant and ongoing communication, not just about what's going on in our schools and what's happening with closures, but also regarding potential supports for continuing our learning opportunities for students. So we provide access to our learning supports for students accessible 24/7 through our website. And if you go to smcps.org, you will see that we have posted all of our resources related to the coronavirus health crisis related on that COVID-19 button that's right on the front page of our website, as well as every school's individual website. Additionally, we have a button that is there now for accessing instructional resources, and I will go to that in a minute. Dr. Smith, if you go to the next page, when you go to the COVID-19 page, all of the correspondence that we have sent out to, to parents and the community are posted on this site. In addition, they are posted in Spanish as well. And so if you'll notice on the top of that page, there is a link to a page that takes all of this information and actually translates all of it into Spanish. And I'd like to thank both Ms. Tar and Ms. Montero, one of our teachers, who have helped to translate all of that information for our families. So if someone has missed a communication, missed a letter that has gone out, they can always go to this page to access it. Dr. Walker referenced the internet survey that is there. I will go over some of that information a little later, but we've also put that link for that survey here so that if somebody missed the information that went out, they can access it and still provide us some ongoing information. In addition to our system updates, our schools have been sending out a variety of ongoing communications. You'll see that they've got weekly updates that have gone out from principals, as well as, like, for example, the Town Creek has actually posted videos of student performances in their last newsletter. Carver has put out some teachers that are reading online for students as, as one way to keep connected with families. And so this ongoing communication is going to, it helps to keep our students and our families and our staff engaged through this, this period of closing. For the instructional resources, this, this page continues to be built out by Division of Instruction staff. Students can sign in through their Clever account. Their Clever account is a single sign-in place where they can access all of their personally linked accounts. So for example, a high school student has their schedule built out in Edgenuity and the courses that are posted there, Imagine Learning Units, iXL, all of those pieces that a student needs a login, they can access through that Clever button. Each student's login brings them to specific resources that match their grade level and their schedule. So when students log on, they will see exactly what aligns with their content. You'll see that I've got actually two links there that show an example of an elementary set of resources as well as a secondary. These are two different students' pages and how they might appear. When we look at the next slide, we're looking specifically at Edgenuity. And Edgenuity, you've seen Dr. Jaffers present this information in the past about its online courses that are aligned specifically with, with our content. So you'll see that students have specific courses that match with their schedule so they can actually go through the units that are aligned with their content. The example that's posted there shows a student's world literature course, an algebra course, a government course, a physics course, and an art course, all that match up with that student's particular schedule. When they go through it, Edgenuity also provides video tutorials on how to use the platform, as well as spaces for students to work, and grades by category. So as they will move through it, they can see their own progress and teachers can as well. This will be something that we'll be sharing additional information on as we go through this next week, now that we have a timeline from the state about what our closing looks like. As that information will come out to families in the coming days about what kinds of instructional supports are available and how we will maintain continuous opportunities for learning. That, in addition to those specific courses that are available through Edgenuity and for the elementary school that matches with Imagine Learning Units, you can see that our content supervisors have worked to provide a variety of resources based on the student's grade level and content that they're in as well. And these are beyond specific structured units, they're a variety of resources that students can go to and families can go to to, to further engage in those content areas. The menu bar on the left gives you a quick access to specific grade level bands, and then when they open it, you see two examples here, grades three through five, end grade, at high school grades. And these pages, again, continue to be built out for students and families to access. Dr. Walker referenced the online survey. As of this morning, we had over 7,000 responses to it. So the numbers that you see there are actually a couple days old when we posted this PowerPoint. What it shows is that roughly, for those who completed it online, no surprise that the vast majority of those who had access to the survey online, could complete it online and have 97%, 96.5% of those participants said, that respondents said that they had access to the internet at home. 3.5% did not. So those 3.5% might have been responding on a phone perhaps. Recognizing that we may not have hit everyone, we may not have had the opportunity to hear from everyone, we did do a drive-up survey at all four of the lunch sites last week. We had 216 respondents who said they did not complete the survey. And you can see that the differences in terms of internet access vary for that group who responded in person. If we go to the next page, you'll see that we asked further questions about the type of internet access. For those who didn't have internet access, it's because of a variety of limits that were placed on the access that they might have to internet. So if they were accessing a primary So if they were accessing it primarily through a mobile device or have limited data, that restricted their access. Of those who did have a high, an internet, that also varies because they may have access, but might have varying limits in how that access is gained. More specifically, that you'll see on the chat, chart on the right, that a little over 70% of respondents said they had unlimited access, that students would be able to access the internet regularly. There are also variances in the remaining 25 to 30% that limits their access. That may be because there might be multiple people accessing limited devices. So if a family has three children, and there's one computer that they have to rotate through, that may limit their access. Or the schedule that might happen when you have multiple students in a home could also limit their access and time to interact. And then there's internet service limitations such as bandwidth that can also be there. What this does is it advises us in terms of providing a more asynchronous type of learning experience for students. And so rather than saying everybody has to log in at a certain time, but providing resources that could be accessed at multiple times in the day, and also looking at providing print resources as needed. This information keeps growing, and the response keeps growing as both, as new information is provided by our state or federal government, and we will continue to provide and build out these resources. So that conversation, that communication will continue, will be posted here, as well as sent out through our school messenger system, which puts it out in multiple venues through the internet, through phone outs, through emails, as well as text messaging capabilities. So with that, I will pause, because I don't know if Dr. Montgomery wants to chime in about the additional supports or others about this. It really is a team effort to provide this support for our families and students.
Evidently, Dr. Montgomery does not.
I'm here, I'm here, but we will be getting more information out. We do have a plan for using resources that our students are already very familiar with. Edgenuity for secondary schools, Imagine Learning for elementary schools. So we'll be getting more information to staff and the communities by the end of the, of the week.
The, the biggest thing I want you all, everybody to walk away with is, so for the last two weeks, we've looked at all the platforms that we've had, we've expanded the licenses, so that there's a license, Edgenuity, we already had expanded our license, so there's a license for every single secondary student to have sign-on, to go into the portal, to do the work. We've made sure that on the Edgenuity platform, all of the scheduled classes of a particular student, that student has then been placed in an Edgenuity class, and then on the other side, the teachers, all the classes that they teach, they have been set up and their students are placed in them. That being said, only a small handful of teachers at the secondary level have been trained how to use Edgenuity, because they don't use Edgenuity. We've been using it for credit recovery, for evening high school, for home instruction. The regular classroom teacher has been teaching in their classroom. So, the next phase for us, we have purchased the license, we have built its structure, we have put the kids in. The next thing we have to do is bring our teachers in and have them work through and understand the platform, and that may take up to five days. All of that being said, for Edgenuity, the same thing has to be done for Imagine Learning, which is Imagine Math and Imagine Reading, same thing. We're sequencing units and putting them all together, but staff hasn't been using that as their primary instructional delivery device in the classroom, they've been using it as an add-on. So that part, staff's going to have to come back and be trained. That's, I, we believe that will be our work next week, to set up telecommuting training for our teachers at home, so they can see these platforms and test them out, and see what it's like, and work through that whole process.
That's brilliant.
Well, that, and that, we, we have been really, there's been a lot of work, and it would be great. The one thing to realize is that one-third of our children live in poverty. And even if they say they have internet access at home, these instructional platforms require dedicated, high-speed internet, because they play videos. So when you go in, you read a little bit, you click through some interactive parts, it's, it launches an instructional video with a certified teacher walking you through that, and you can go backwards and for, you can't go forward, you can't forward any of the stuff that's on there, you have to watch the whole thing. And if you stop it, it starts you over again. But it requires that, that technology structure and support at their home. So even after all of this work and effort, our most at-risk kids are going to be the most disadvantaged as far as the next four weeks.
Now, I saw where one school system used a hotspot, but they, it was school buses. So in those areas where the students were not connected, they could use this hotspot and do the work.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we have to, I mean, use all the imagination that we have and all the creativity we have to help that 30%, whether they don't have a device, or if they don't have connectivity, that we are problem solvers, that we can find a way to do that, and through the survey, that was just a, a limited survey.
It was a third of our population.
But we need a system-wide survey to see what people are, because the ones who don't have the device, possibly we can put a device, which we already have in the school, in their hands.
So the hotspot in those school systems, I actually was at a conference with a presentation on it, those are controlled and issued out by the FCC. So it's, it's, it's a completely separate program, it's for rural bandwidth, and it's, it's not like Scott can necessarily put a hotspot on our bus and drive it into a neighborhood, because that's all, that's a completely separate federal program that they are attempting and trying to expand, and they were in this, in this congressional legislative session up in Washington. So that's, that's where that's coming from, because I've, I've seen the same reports, and it, it, it is an FCC-mandated and run program.
Well, and I will say this for St. Mary's County, we only have about five or six hotspots.
Right.
Because each hotspot that we have has to have its own individual cellular plan through Verizon, and it's unbelievably expensive.
That's the FCC.
It's basically like handing, handing each person a cellphone with an unlimited data contract, because that's, that's what the devices are. So, in the, in the next four weeks, it is unrealistic to think we will be able to do anything relative to assisting with tech, with connectivity, other than perhaps moving some of our, our wireless access points at our schools, and moving them towards the, the parking lots, or directing them towards the parking lots. So somebody could drive a car into a parking lot and get guest wireless access to our, and that's, those are some of the things that they're working on, make no promise. The, the other, the other is for the kids that don't have any device at home, we have about 9,000 laptop computers that have been upgraded to Windows 10 and can run all the programs and what have you. We have to have staff touch every single one of those computers to reconfigure them, so they lock them down somewhat, and then set them up that they could go outside of our buildings and access any, a wireless access point and connect to our infrastructure. We have staff doing that right now. It is exceptionally time-consuming. We have, right now, one tech per high school, one tech per middle school, and Dr. Walker, can you help me, how many, how do we do for our elementary schools?
Elementary, about one tech for every four buildings or so.
Right. So, so it's, it's moments like this when, when it becomes readily apparent how well-funded a system is. So Jack Smith in Montgomery County, they're going into a warehouse, and they're pulling all of their backup one-to-one, I was amazed at how many systems, and they're all the concentrated, you know, $18,000 a year per pupil, that they have a one-to-one, and they're, they have these available to then send out. All of us, St. Mary's, everybody on the eastern shore, everybody in western Maryland, we are the great have-nots. We don't have one-to-one, we don't have connectivity, and that's, that's a whole nother platform to talk about Kerwin and all of that, but we are doing everything as a system that we can to reach the majority of kids that we can. And what we'll be doing in the next week, we'll be looking at how we can get a device in the hands of some students who have no device.
Well, can I also have, you know, hard copy instructional materials, Channel 96? Any thought of broadcasting and providing, you know, so if you're in second grade, you're going to watch this hour, or anything like that?
We have, yes, we have looked at, we have, we've looked at what we can broadcast through Channel 96, what we could have for a schedule, what that would look like, people coming in, recognize that would have to be really pretty tightly scripted. That's one portion. The other is packets. We will create hard copy printed-out packets for every single student, each grade level, and be ready to hand those out, but that requires a lot of bodies to run the packets, put them together, have them identified, and ready for the student by the grade level, what have you. So that's what we're hoping that, with the phone conference that we have with Dr. Sam this afternoon, we might have some more guidance as to how we could bring back some of the staff to really prep up to do continuity of learning.
And you need to look, you've got seven minutes.
And, and that's going to be a seven minutes.
Right, so I had, so I just, I just have one thing, so if anyone who is watching this and sees all these online supports, and then you go into these things for your child, and you go into Clever, and you're like, oh my goodness, my child has no assignments, right? So just so we are completely clear.
It has not been activated.
It has not been added in.
Yet.
The two weeks, as I said before, it was dropped on us on the 12th.
Right.
Right? We had to close by the 16th, so, and everyone, no one went to work, because the buildings were closed for those 72 hours. So everyone who's up twirling that, oh my gosh, my kids don't have any schoolwork, the teachers didn't send anything home, everyone was instructed not to, because we didn't know what was going to happen at the end of the two weeks. So in the two-week period, if everyone follows the timeline, the school system has been working to build all of these things out with the anticipation that we were going to close longer. So if everyone could just sit tight and not blow up my phone, and don't blow up my social media about why your kid didn't get any work sent home, because they were instructed not to, because we have 10 and 11-month employees that have not been going to work, and we cannot ask them to work until we have additional guidance from MSDU.
Guidance from MSDU, that those days might be made up.
Right, because we are bound by a negotiated agreement.
Yep.
And one of the limiting factors for internet is with all of the base employees, so many of them teleworking, and multiples in households.
Right.
Student access to the internet may also be somewhat of an issue.
The whole thing is pushed to the brink right now.
Yes.
So, so everyone is working on it, I know all the AP board came out on, over the weekend with what the schedule is, what the tests are going to involve, and they are actually doing online tutorials, beginning, I think, this evening, or this afternoon, on various classes. So, once again, you have to have a, you have to have a stable platform in order to take advantage of any of that.
And not everybody has access to Channel 96.
Right, I don't.
Oh, no, no, that, well, that's the other part, is that the cable doesn't run.
Right.
Certainly, to the places where they don't have service, they don't have cable.
Correct.
Because if they had cable, then they could have a cable modem, and they'd have service.
Right, which I have neither, so.
So, we just want, we just want you to be aware that all of this is, we, we are...
It's a work in progress.
We are working feverishly behind the scenes, and this, and this is honestly, this is a glimpse to the future. This is the way, there will be blended instruction that happens in our classroom, and so when you're not in the classroom, you're going to be able to pick up. If you're out, by the end of next year, I really do believe if we had another event like this, we would fairly seamlessly be able to deliver online learning to our kids out in the larger community, assuming that we work on the, the connectivity issues.
I want to thank you for all you're doing, because you're moving us in the right direction, you, along with your team and everybody in the system. We will get there, we're moving forward and doing all that we can do.
Everything that we can do.
And every, and parents and community members need to visit the website.
Absolutely.
At SMCPS, because everything is there.
It's all there. Oh, yeah, yep, yep. Okay.
Okay, all right, Ms. McCourt.
All right, so from Ms.
Somewhere, we've lost her.
Oh, she's in there someplace.
I see her.
I'm here.
Hello.
Yeah, hi, Tammy.
Good afternoon again.
Fiscal update, COVID-19, there we go. All right.
Okay.
There you go.
You're up, Tammy.
All right, so before I begin, although this is intended to be a focused fiscal update, DSS, DOI, finance, and HR teams have been absolutely nothing less than amazing in maintaining the continuity of what I call the backbone services that must continue and to support our staff during this closure. Most of the folks in the community assume that school closures for students means that staff are out, but that's obviously a far cry from, from the case. As Ms. Bailey alluded to just a moment ago, in fact, for many of us across the district, our workload has significantly increased. About 75% of our fiscal staff have transitioned to full-time telecommute or flexible scheduling, but the remaining staff have to come, continue to come in the office, maintain the secure infrastructure that we have in place, involving access to our bank accounts, our accounts payable, and our payroll checks and processes. When this announcement was made, the school district had just one business day to plan and execute initiatives to address the, what we thought was an initial two-week, and now certainly longer, closure for students. Next slide, please.
Oh. Do you want me to go do it? Scott's leaving to go get on his conference call at 2:00. Okay, go ahead, Tammy, we're on, we're on the care of students.
Okay. Give me just one second before I get there, so fiscally, to immediately assess the priorities. First and foremost, the focus was on our students, with immediate conversation with Dr. Montgomery and Ms. Long, and additional priorities of immediate focus, then on March 13th were staff compensation, vendor payments, and partners in education. Can we go back one slide? There you go. The finance and HR staff took the initiative to facilitate the purchase and distribution of $50 gift, grocery gift cards to students as identified by the Department of Student Services. Our procurement office arranged the logistics of rapid procurement from five local grocery stores to ensure that no one store was overburdened, to assist in expediting our request. And part of the logistics entitled, entailed their purchasing office to contact the stores in advance of our personnel leaving the office, so that the store would be expecting our staff. And doing so by making these calls to the grocery stores, we found that we had to reissue some of the checks that we had originally issued to the grocery stores, because they couldn't accept checks in excess of $500. Our benefit and our budget offices coordinated the delivery staff and routes, who would take the cars, cards to which schools, and exactly how many cards were to be delivered to each school. Our accounts payable staff came in early to expedite the cutting of the checks to the grocery stores, and we had volunteers from both fiscal services and HR to acquire the gift cards and deliver them to all the identified schools. Then the Department of Student Services reached out to the guardians for Margaret Brent Middle Schools and other students that weren't in school on March 13th. On this surface, this certainly seems like a relatively simple task, and certainly doesn't involve any of the level of logistics and coordination that Dr. Walker's food services staff have been going through, but I just wanted to take the time to recognize the staff in fiscal and HR, as it took the majority of the day on that Friday to get all of these cards acquired and delivered prior to the school dismissal that day. Next slide, please. So, next slide.
Wait, hold on, there you go. All right, we're caught up, Tammy.
Payroll as well operated under a compressed work schedule. They verified and processed the March 20th pay on March 13th. The direct deposit file was filed with Bank of America on March 13th, and hard checks were prepared for mailing on Thursday, March 19. Staff formulated a plan of action, working well beyond their duty date, to ensure that the pay was completed for all St. Mary's County Public Schools employees. 2,614 employees were paid, and this was one day's work of work, or it was day's worth of work compressed into one day. Additionally, we reached out to all of our substitutes, and we made them aware that they- Additionally, we reached out to all of our substitutes and we made them aware that they could submit for any accrued sick and safe leave. Next slide. Our account payable staff as well worked at a very high level late into the day on the 13th to ensure that all of our vendors received payments that were due or soon to be due. Staff brainstormed upcoming payments that were facilitated as a result of working with internal and external stakeholders. The checks were cut after the post office had closed for the day, so staff volunteered to take the checks to the post office on Saturday for mailing. All of our major vendors were paid, our bus contractors, caregivers. We certainly wanted to make sure our health insurance bill was paid in advance, pension utilities, credit card, Abicus, staff reimbursements, and construction vendors. $12 million in payments were made to staff and vendors on this one day. Bottom line, pay for our staff had been uninterrupted, vendor payments had been uninterrupted, and payments due for services rendered to our contractors were uninterrupted. All of this was accomplished in one day. Next slide. For our partners in education, we wanted to ensure a continuity of payment to businesses for our bus contractors. We allowed for an advance option for our temporary services as well as our special education contractors. And we wanted to ensure that those partners were taken care of to ensure that the continuity of services where the partners was in place at time of school reopening. Many of these temporary services or special education contractors have opted to encourage our staff to seek unemployment insurance, but we certainly provided that option for in advance. And finally, both myself and Rob Springer have been engaging in biweekly statewide CFO meetings with our colleagues in all the public school districts across the state as well as MSD and the PIZAM executive director. We've been seeking both state and federal guidance on a multitude of new financial issues that we've found ourselves in, as well as engaging in an ongoing exchange of dialogue in hopes of allowing for some continuity on school fiscal matters across the state. We've had an ongoing Google document that's been shared and updated with statewide inquiries and surveys. And that's been shared with Dr. Smith so that he can have the most current information readily available during all of this PIZAM conference calls. And then finally, our benefits office has been closely monitoring the federal and state law changes that have been enacted and guidance being provided on lots of FNLA and ADA and unemployment changes and how it may impact our staff benefits and payroll. Leslie Gancella, the staff of the benefits office, has moved all of her pre-retirement scheduled meetings with staff to Zoom to ensure that their Maryland State Retirement Agency payments, I'm sorry, documentation is in place to allow for a continuity of income is in place when they go to retire at the end of the school year. So that concludes, I believe, all of the fiscal updates at the moment. It is changing every day, of course. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question on the continuity for bus contractors. I can appreciate you extending those benefits, but the contractors aren't spending any money on fuel, on diesel fuel. Is there any adjustments for that in your payments?
Yes, there will be. I'll let Dr. Walker speak to that a little bit more.
Yes, we're not paying fuel costs at this time.
Okay.
Or we won't after the March payments. Going forward, I think the fuel costs will be deducted from the payment. I'll have to confirm with Mr. Thompson, but that's my understanding.
Very good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Tammy, I'm just going to say it again, you know, once again, this, the closure was dropped on everyone at 4:15 on Thursday. And for you and your staff to work tirelessly to complete all these things is just phenomenal. So hats off to you. You know, not that we expected anything less, but I know it was a huge, heavy lift and, you know, it just shows to the professionalism and dedication of the people that we have working here to make sure that both the students are cared for, you know, our employees receive their checks, which I know everyone, you know, is uncertain about right now. And then also that, you know, all the vendor payments, you know, are taken care of. So I know it was no small feat at all. So just thank you.
And I would just add my thanks to that, to you and all your staff. The work you did was extraordinary, but.
In extremely compressed timeframe.
In one day. I want to thank you too. That was an extraordinary job that you and your staff did to make sure that staff was paid. The cards, food cards were delivered to the homeless families and the vendors were paid and our partners in education. So that was a phenomenal job and I thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone have anything else? All right. Once again, thank you, everyone. I'm sure there will be updates as we continue to move through the next few days, so just stay tuned. The next meeting will be on April 15th at 9:00 a.m. and we are adjourned.